I call to order the city of Beulton's planning commission for Thursday, December first, two thousand and twenty. Commissioner Liggett will lead us in the pledge.
Please rise. Good afternoon.
Roll call.
Mr. Blockdy.
Here.
Mr. Liggett.
Here.
Mr. Sarkia.
Yeah.
Vice Chair Mercado.
Here.
Chair Hammond.
Here. Okay, tonight we are going to reorder the agenda and we will put the presentations after the other business item. Uh, so then we will approve our minutes from November seventeenth. Do I have a uh? Motion?
I'll make the motion to approve minutes of November seventeenth.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Public comments, this is where any members of the audience wishing to address the planning commission can uh talk about matters not on the agenda and there are no public comments tonight. Uh consent calendar none, continued public hearings none, new public hearings none. And we will go into our other business and an update on the status of the waypoint bowling alley project and I believe city manager Scott Wolf is filling in for the planning director tonight.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, the planning director is out sick this evening, so you get me instead, I'm sorry. Um, the, the commission requested several weeks ago that staff return with uh just a brief discussion on uh the status of the waypoint project and a little bit of an investigation into what the current situation is in terms of its processing. I know there's a lot of rumors running around. I know that there's a lot of um fingers being pointed. Uh, we have done that research. We've done the research uh in, in, in three uh uh specific phases of the project uh uh processing. We've looked at the planning department's processing of it. We've looked at, at the city engineering section uh uh processing of it and then we've looked at the county's building and safety uh processing part of it. I'm just gonna briefly go through them. I can answer some questions you may have, uh some of them particularly the ones pertaining to building and safety. I may not have uh answers in depth, as in depth as you would like to see them. Uh, but I'll do my best and then anything having to do with engineering, our public works directors here this evening also, and she can talk about it. Um, essentially, the uh, the complaints that came from the applicant for the um the bowling alley project, the waypoint project uh focused on uh what we might refer to as some late hits or information that came to, to their attention rather late, uh some costs that weren't expected, those sorts of things. I will state that uh from the planning department's perspective, this project was approved and the entitlement was granted five years ago, so. Um, and, and that was, that was following a change, a significant change in the plans by the applicant after an initial entitlement was, was reached. Um, so after it, granted, it was a very long process, but there were issues at play in that process through the planning department that were not within the control of the city at that point. As you remember, the original entitlement was requested at a site over an industrial way. There were some disputes with neighbors. There was, I believe, a lawsuit was threatened or filed uh in response to that application. So what brought it to uh entitlement took five years, that's true, but that was, those five years were largely not uh due to any action or inaction on the part of the city. Uh, since that point, the planning department has basically been in the pro- or in, in the, the business of shepherding this project through. And it has been a priority for the city staff to get this project through its uh processing and under construction as quickly as possible. Some of the delays that have taken place have been due to the building department and our engineering review. I would say that by and large, those delays um that have taken place have not been unreasonable and are not un- uh uncommon in processes like this. Other parts that delay have been clearly and admittedly on the part of the applicant when it came time to uh to, to file those applications. Some delays were uh were uh seen, you know, due to funding or to their uncertainty as to whether or not they wanted to proceed at a, at a particular point in time. With regard to Tetra Tech, our city engineering firm. I, there um. Uh, we do have some memos. I can get copies of them to you if you'd like, uh that, that get into more detail on this. Uh, but there have been two plan checks uh by Tetra Tech for the engineering review of the site. The site itself, um, it is relatively flat, but it is not a prepared, it's not a site that's been previously prepared for development, so it hasn't been formally graded. It hasn't been compacted. There are all sorts of issues, most of which I would guess, or many of which I would guess have to do with um ultimately the drainage from the site, but there are other uh items, in particular, one that was noted by um the project architect had to do with a request for what was referred to as a, a control plan. Essentially what the in, engineering department was looking for was a plan identifying everything that currently exists on site. There's not much, but there are a few things. There's trees, there's some asphalt, there might be um some uh drainage uh pipes or whatever from the previous residents that was there that are still on site. And then they wanted the, the items that were going to be removed identified so that the engineering department could say, okay, we need to make sure that when we inspect this, that these things are taken care of. That was relatively simple item, but I think there was some misunderstanding between Tetra Tech and, and the project applicant team as to what was actually being requested. Most of the corrections that were noted in the last round of plan checks were very minor in nature. Um, they're um and when I say very minor, I'm of course looking at it from the perspective of someone who works with this day in and day out. If you're not in the uh development world, you may not realize or appreciate the fact that these are not terribly major issues. The point being here that yes, two plan checks have been done. There was another one going to be required. But it was, it, it should have been a relatively quick one and um if someone were to come in and purchase this property, uh, the, the work that's required through the engineering section here to, to bring this to conclusion should be very um minimal. Uh, not negligent, but, but minimal. It, it shouldn't take a long time at all. Lastly, uh, the building and safety department. Uh, there, the um building and safety department has also had two plan checks through their process. Again, this is not uncommon. Uh, it's not uncommon for projects to see three or even four plan checks uh as they move through the process, especially with a project as complex as this one and um the uh the big delay from the building department has not been due to their uh lack of desire to process this permit or to, to plan check this. Uh, because we have been hounding them constantly telling them we need to prioritize this. The problem with the building department and it's the county building department is that due to state legislation pertaining to housing, the county building departments are absolutely required to prioritize any residential construction ahead of any commercial construction. So when the building department returned comments to the applicant or, you know, return comments to the applicant and the applicant returned responses to those comments, the building department can't pick it up and just look at those responses. It goes at the bottom of the pile until all the residential projects are checked and then they check it and that's been the major not a, the major, a major component of, of the delays that have been seen by the applicant. Um, there's not a whole lot we can do about this. We can apologize for that uh uh all night long and the building department is, is not real happy about it either because they're getting set upon by both sides. The, the, the building community is not happy with them. Um, and, you know, but if they, if they um give the building community what they want, then they face sanctions by the state and so that's just not acceptable. That's really um what's been going on there. Um, structural plans have been reviewed. Um, there are some portions of those uh structural plans that have not responded to the comments. The building department has left them again. This is a, this is kind of a, a a, a larger project in the scheme of things here in Beulton. I believe it was not the typical wood frame construction we're looking at. It's it is a, i- it's something a little more complicated. Um, there, there is, if this moves forward, and at least one more plan check that would be required through building and safety. Um, and possibly more. We just don't know at this point. We have at the applicant's request suspended all processing on the project at this point and uh from the date that she initially came into our uh in, into city hall and said she was done. We've, we've suspended processing on this, so. Um, I, I can say that the project is much further along than it was when it began. How much longer the building portion would take? I, I don't have a good estimate right now. It depends upon the responsiveness of whoever picks this project up and brings it back to the building department to what the comments have been previously. If they're very responsive and they, they take care of it, it should be rather quick. If, if there's some things lacking, that it may take longer. Um, I will note that uh there, there are, are other factors here at work. Obviously COVID entered into this and resulted in some delays. And as a result of COVID and some of the um, the changes to the economy that we've seen in recent years, things have been very volatile and uh of note are construction materials, construction costs have at one point over a year ago, construction costs had tripled from what they were prior to COVID. And I think they've subsided a little bit, but they're still pretty volatile right now. Uh, I know financing has become much more difficult to obtain because of interest rate hikes and such. Um, so between all of that and not to mention labor shortages and the, the difficulty in getting people to actually come to work. Um, this just may have been simply too much for the applicant to um you know, to surmount or, or to, to push through. So we're hopeful uh that we will find someone who wants to come in and purchase this piece of property. Uh, i- if someone comes in and actually some have come in and expressed an interest. Um, they go to the top of my list in terms of sitting down with them and, and figuring out what it is they want to do and how we can get this project built. Uh, we have had some interest um on the part of the public or members of the public out there who would like to see this used to build housing. This property is not zoned for housing. Uh, it isn't in, in our affordable housing overlay zone, but the affordable housing overlay zone credits that or, or allotment for housing have been used up by the Beulton Garden Apartments and so we will not be considering this piece of property for housing unless we get direction from the city council to do so. So our primary goal right now is to encourage and incentivize the development of this um uh waypoint project or some similar project. And we will certainly keep the planning commission and the city council apprised of progress as we move forward. So I'm happy to answer any questions. Rose is here as well and um that's my report for this evening.
Thank you. Uh, questions? Mr. Blockdy. Remember when you were here and you were last?
I, I did. I complained about that because then other, other people would ask the same question. Really, I don't have any questions. Like, I've already thought this through, one of this.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Commissioner Liggett.
No questions.
Okay, jeez, you're getting off easy tonight. Uh, Commissioner Sarkia.
Well, I, I feel that we, the planning commission and the planning department did, did everything we could to help this project along and uh sometimes things just don't work out. But I think somebody, and I hope somebody is gonna pick this thing up and make a go of it. Um, the kids in this valley could really use the, the recreation that that will provide along with what we already have. It'd be great for the town and the whole valley.
Great. Vice Chair Mercado.
I'll have questions. Uh, so in the permitting process, when the applicant does the plan check, are those fees? So every time they do a plan check, there's, is there a fee by Tetra Tech or the county?
No, what happens is um in the case of Tetra Tech, uh, the applicant pays a, a deposit upfront and given a project this size, the deposit was rather large. It was just, well, fairly recently paid. It was a, a rather large deposit. Um, the two plan checks uh that Tetra Tech has done um have not even reached the halfway point on that deposit. They're about a third of the way through that deposit. Uh, and so the, the deposit is, uh, the amount is generally selected to ensure we don't have to go back and ask them for more money. Uh, that's just not something anybody wants to have to deal with, so. That, that's the case there. And on the building and safety side, they charge fees. There's not a deposit involved. Um, they have uh initial fees that they, that they pay and the fees for the building permit application include the plan check and two rounds of comments. Well, they've had those two rounds of comments, so this, if they were to proceed, they would start with a third round of comments now and they would have to pay an additional fee to cover that and subsequent rounds of, of plan check. I don't know what those fees are. Um, I, I'm not sure, uh, I'm not sure that the, the planning director knows what those are either. We, you know, we can look into it and see and we probably will so that we can uh, you know, provide sufficient information to anyone who may come in and want to pick this project up and run with it.
Right. And the other question is, so I know on most of these, their entitlements continue on with that property, so is there uh two years, five years that we would have before these entitlements go away?
The project, the, the entitlement runs with the property, not with the applicant. Um, I believe we've had one extension of this entitlement so far, two.
I think, I think we've had one.
Yeah, we had one. So there should be two more entitlement extensions that are a, available. There's an initial five year and then there's one that we're in their first one, right? It's been a little over five years since the first uh, since the first entitlement, so it, we're in our first extension. There are two more extensions after.
There would only be one more.
Oh, subdivisions get three or, or or no, okay. I'll, I'll take your word for it. You, you know, we're better than you. Is it only one? Okay.
Yeah, it's two. It's five years and then one, one, two, one year.
Okay.
So we're kind of, I think in the middle of the first extension, so there would be another one.
Right.
But that, that clock would continue ticking, right?
It does. It continues ticking, so we, we, we do need to find someone to come in and, and pick this up relatively quickly. You know, get those building permits approved, at least start grading so that we can, we can vest that permit.
Okay.
Were you done? Okay. Uh, I just had two little tiny things before I was gonna ask about the timing also. Um, when you were talking about maybe there's some grading, you know, it's not a ready to go parcel. Is that where um, when Carol, she gave us some letters and stuff, there was a, like a demolition plan that she had to do. Is that what that was?
Yeah, there, there was a control plan and the demolition plan. Rose, I don't recall what the, what the situation with the demolition plan was.
The demo plan is what you had described where there's so much um information going on in the plans, in the civil plan set that they gave. They have all the utilities, the grading, the curbing, the pavement, everything's on there and it makes it difficult to see, you know, what's existing, needs to be removed, replaced, relocated, et cetera. So they requested a sheet, an additional sheet um that shows existing um items from the basic topo and what's to remain, what's to be removed, relocated. So essentially, you know, they have all the information in their files. For us, I mean, I don't know how simple to simplify it, but you, you turn off the improvement plan layers and show what's existing and provide that on the plan set. So we don't feel that there's much additional work to it, that they need to go do a whole bunch of, it's relatively simple.
Yeah.
Um, but it would definitely clarify for um the inspector during the plan checks to make clear what is there, isn't there, because it's, the plan sheets are already too crowded and, and kind of muddled, so it's difficult to ascertain what's what.
But it's a little bit more complex than just a grading permit, right?
It's all, it's all, it's all part of the, it's all part of the, all these things have to be done before you can even get to a grading permit.
Oh.
What they're asking for there with that demolition was, was just, as I mentioned, to, to identify what's existing on the property and what's gonna be removed
Okay.
through the process. Uh, as, as Rose indicated, all these things are different layers in a, in a CAD file and in theory, turn off the layers that aren't necessary, print the sheet out and you, you pretty much have what they're looking for, so.
So in other words, if somebody who's a, a professional developer would understand some of these
I, I assume so.
More than someone who is just.
And, and I don't, I don't wanna, I don't wanna um make assumptions here because the applicant, while the applicant's not a professional developer, the applicant had professionals working on this project, part of the team. There's an architect and engineers and um, you know, there, there were just um these were the comments we received from the architect and we, we, when we looked into those comments to find out, hey, what went wrong here? This is what we discovered, so.
Okay, thank you. Um, the other one is in layman's terms, uh, that fi- probably the final plan check. So is that after the final plan check and the and the conditions or whatever that are met, is that then are permits issued? I mean, are, are we fairly close to?
Building and safety is done and, and, and all of the uh, all of the structural aspects of the building have been shown on the plans that meet code and, and are, are what the building department is looking for. When they're satisfied that their engineer can stamp that plan and said this meets the building code, permits can be issued. I, I don't wanna speak to how close they are or make any indication. All I know is they've been through two rounds of, of
Right.
Plan check. The last set of comments they received were, were not entirely responsive, so we know that there's at least one more to go. It, it depends, as it always does, it depends on the responsiveness of the applicant's team to the comments that are received by the building department. Uh, as to how quickly that can turn around and that's made uh more difficult by this requirement that residential projects have to go.
Okay. Okay, thank you. That's all for me. Um, I'm just going to echo uh Commissioner Sarkia's comments in that, you know, we hope someone comes along and does take over and cause I think we can all agree and the community wants it.
Absolutely.
It'd be a great addition to our community, so. Okay, thank you, Mr. Wolf. And now we have um presentations and I believe we're going to start with a dignitary person in the audience that's going to do, to start the presentations.
There we go.
Uh, Holly Sierra, Mayor of Beulton, for one more week. I'll be following you gentlemen out next Thursday. Uh, I've been here a little bit longer than you, but I just, I really wanted to make a point of being here tonight to thank you. You are the front line for city council. Uh, you, you study uh development and projects in our town a lot more closely than city council does. We rely on you to come back to us with, with your thorough investigation, conversations with developers. We truly do depend on you uh to do your job and everybody here, including Commissioner Liggett and Blodike have done uh just an incredible job. Uh, development, uh COVID kind of stopped everything. The economy kind of stopped everything and, and the last few months have been incredibly busy for you guys, uh not necessarily where you're getting a lot of pats on the back. Um, it's, it's certainly not an easy job, but I just wanted to make sure that I came here and I thank you very, very much for your service to our community. Uh, it, you, you don't get a lot of gratification from it. Uh, but please know that we really appreciate what you've done and all the work you've put into this job. And I wanted to thank you. And our staff has got parting gifts for you, so.
Commissioner Liggett. You get the pretty blue one.
Thank you very much.
Oh, thank you.
Blodike. Um, I just, I, the mayor had nothing to do with this. I believe this was staff. Um, but I just wanted to make sure I came and, and gave you my sincere thanks for a job really well done.
And can we get a picture?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. He's doing great.
Okay.
Doing great. This way. You with your, your uh, the community gardens and your students. Oh my, that was fun to read. Oh, that was so good.
Okay, everybody ready? Let's see. Smile pretty. One more. Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
In the LA Times in the morning. Thank you for still being here and thank you for still being here. Oh my goodness.
Gotta get the praise for my green. Earth true.
Thank you, Mayor Sierra. And.
I know, I've been a lot drinking my cab when I get home from this. Thank you. I know, I saw them. Thank you so much. Everybody. I, I know that I really appreciate coming on board. Um, I started out basically, I came with Irma and asking her a lot of questions and wondering why things were going the way they were. And she finally said, well, there's a, there's a position opening up on planning. And um, you know, becoming a part of the system is a better way to learn what really is happening. You know, I'm so glad that uh Irma and, and other staff members talked me into it and that Polly approved me and uh and it was very important. So to those people right now, Pat, I am seeing uh talking bad about the city or planning or council. I wish they would just become part of the system and, and try learning what's going on because it opened my eyes.
Yeah.
So, that's.
Thank you. You wanna add anything?
I have nothing profound to. It's been wonderful. I've, I've been on development side of it, receiving those plan checks, uh being a landscape architect, being part of a larger team, so I understand that process and I'm usually the one complaining to the planning department, but but so having that experience and when I moved to Beulton, seeing so much opportunity here, I thought it'd be important to have a, be able to be the person to have a say on how, how it is developed. For the good, I imagine. I think we've done that the last two and a half years. Um, so I, I've appreciated every moment of it, even when I got to get under people's skins, that's it's my job. But thank you all. It's been fun.
And thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to add the same thing. I thoroughly enjoyed working with both of you. Um, you both really did your homework on every project, asked good questions, made good comments. You both really did your homework on every project, asked good questions, made good comments. It's just been a really good team, the five of us here. And you really, you know, brought good perspectives to the commission, so I thank you too for your time and your service and anytime either one of you want to come back, you're welcome. And and thank you, Mayor Sierra, for the presentations and thank you. We won't be attending your city council next Thursday, but thank you for your service and your time with the city. Let's see, with that, we will go to written communications, which I don't believe there are any. Any additional planning commissioner comments, anyone?
I was going to say, thank you all for doing a great job and I I guess I I have a profound status of being able to say I approved both of you guys on when I was on city council. I think I made a great choice at that time.
Okay, I'm planning director, city manager comments.
Um, just real briefly, I I just want to kind of echo what's been said here already about our departing commissioners here. A lot of people don't understand what the planning commission does and what its function is and we have a planning department and our planning department is very technically proficient and they can bring you information that has been thoroughly vetted and analyzed and and a recommendation that is solid. The planning commission's job is not to analyze these projects. The planning directors or the, excuse me, the planning commission's job is not to analyze these projects. The planning commission's job is to is to take the information that the planning staff provides you and impart your own wisdom into it. And that's really what the planning commission's role is. And you you've all, you're absolutely right. This is a great team. You've got five members that really work well together. You all have your own individual strengths, but together you've done a wonderful job at at making our development process, our entitlement process here in the city work and providing the city council with with good, solid recommendations. And on top of that, I know that our planning staff just loves working with you and I I wish I could have attended more than a few meetings that I've done in the last three years, but if if any of the other staff would like to chime in here, please do. But I'd like to thank you on behalf of the the staff for all the work that you've done and wish you well and at some point, if we see your name on an application for a planning appointment later, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Irma, Claire.
I would just like to echo whatever all has been said tonight. I thoroughly enjoy working with all the planning commissioners and we will sorely miss both Erin and Bob on the commission with your strength in landscape architecture and development. You brought a nice well-rounded perspective and will miss you, but wish you well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I agree with everything that's been said tonight and in the seventeen years that I've been here, this has been one of the best planning commissions that I have worked with, so I thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That is nice.
Thank you.
Oh, and I do want to add to Bob. I might stop by the nursery from time to time with tree questions on on projects that come in. Is this the right kind of tree for this project? Anyway.
I don't mind looking at new projects.
Okay, thank you for everyone for all your comments and with that, we will adjourn at six thirty PM.
Good job.